...special board meetings on Monday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and five. Will you stand for the pledge? Laura, would you lead us, please?
Call me. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, please. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
And Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
I have no cards up here for citizens comments. Is there any unfinished business or agenda adjustments? Hearing none, we'll start the Board of Education interviews and appointments. The first person is Suzanne Casten Schell. Schnell.
No.
No. She probably in the library.
Was she notified that she was supposed to be here?
She might get in the library.
Want me to look in the library?
I'll go check.
Suzanne. What? They were told when they turned in their application? And they might be down by the library thinking that's where we're going to be.
Wow.
Train.
Huh?
Train.
Oh, okay. Is everybody down?
No, ma'am.
How do you not know you're not? Neither so. John. Okay, Johnson, you have the first question?
I do. John, could you give us a brief background of how you relate to this district?
I've been here since I bought my house in nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, sorry. Both my children have grown up and hopefully graduated here. My daughter will graduate this year. Been a business owner in the area for past three years, a hundred percent of my home. Was in partnerships for ten years prior to that. Come to the area from Northern Michigan, a small town in Northern Michigan. Was married to a city girl and stuck here. So, that's how I come to that area.
Did you want to add something?
No, I was just wondering if that's what you're looking for.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. That's where I came from, my background here.
What are the three issues that the Bridgeport Spaulding Community School District is currently facing?
The three issues is deficit is the big problem. The declining students. Student enrollment obviously has led to a financial burden, I would say, previously. The priority school status is a very big concern. Based on my involvement in the school in order to games, I think, I think parent activity is a huge detriment to the school right now. Although, Andy, you guys were at the last football game, but I was pretty embarrassed to be a parent and having a nice vacation as a student. Except parents, like, because I don't have parents who are enough to support their students. I think that's a, that's a concern.
Lack of parental support.
Absolutely. And I just run UNF conversion matter many times in the issues. We, we, we're not agreeing on that.
Okay. Thanks.
John, at times you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or the law that you're required to uphold as a board member. How will you handle this?
The only way that's more of the proper moral ways to do it is follow law. Over the past three months, I've studied the laws, I've read countless things from the MASV. I've studied this thing, which I talked to a couple of you, you've never seen it, but this, this resource manual is, is a great, great study guide. I have years of experience with leadership, tie back on leadership and things I have learned over the years from leadership classes that I've taken. Will be a big point. Obviously, it's difficult sometimes to set your personal feelings aside from, from the public realm, but you have to do what's right, what's, what the policy manual states, and rely on policy.
John, how would you handle a situation involving your own child, a neighbor, another parent, or other situations that may arise that could possibly be a conflict of interest to you directly as a board member?
Personally, I don't feel that, that I would allow it to become a conflict of interest for my child and/or a neighboring child. Again, policies are written for a reason, and policies need to be followed, whether that means my child is going to be found guilty of something or not. It's policy is policy. We don't follow policy. We don't, we don't follow the laws that we've written, the guidelines that we've written, and what's the use.
What relationship do you believe the Board of Education should have with the superintendent?
The biggest thing is that the relationship that the Board has with the superintendent is called accountability. The Board has to plan the work, the superintendent has to work the plan. I put that on my application that there's, without planning your work and working your plan, nothing's going to, nothing's going to succeed. You're not going to be successful. I've built a very successful business over the last thirteen years of steps and procedures based on planning my work and working my plan. I've taken a company that was a one-hundred-thousand-dollar company and I bought into it, and in five years, we became three-and-a-half-million-dollar company. It didn't come without a written plan. It didn't come without strategic planning. It didn't come without financial goals and objectives and setting them and working, working the plan that we created.
An average month for a school board member could include up to three scheduled meetings and perhaps another five school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily emails correspondence requiring reading and district updates. How would you fit this into your schedule?
Just as I said on my application, if I give my commitment to something, I'm going to give a hundred and ten percent or not in the other. Yes, I'm a very busy person, but I also have very good people that work for me to come on my company in my absence. I was gone for seventeen days when I went to Africa in May and had zero contact with my company. Did just fine. So, I'm very involved. I get emails daily on my phone. I know there's been a couple of you guys that I've talked to throughout the last four months that don't even get your school emails. And I find that hard to believe with technology the way it is, so that's, that's a concern. I check my emails instantly. When they come through, I read them. I know, Mr. Lang, you've responded to my emails pretty rapidly, so you obviously, you know what it's like being in the IT industry. I've got a very solid background in IT myself, so. So, to answer your question, I'll give a hundred and ten percent or not in the other.
Well, I'm not a technology person, so that's why I probably can't get into mine.
We're facing some real challenging times right now. What made you decide to want to follow this decision-making process?
Well, I would, there were three things left, I was going to give it all in case of the last board meeting to explain to you why. You know, and I've, I've talked to most of you, and you know my feelings. My biggest reason is because I have a daughter that's a senior, and this is supposed to be the most enjoyable, most enjoyable year of her career at Bridgeport Spaulding Schools. She started in preschool, she graduates this year. When she came home, a week and a half into the school year, sat down on the couch crying and said, "Dad, it's not fun. I want to quit school." I put my foot down because for the last three years, I've tried to force her to work at other schools. Because I, I've seen the decline, I've seen the decline in the condition of the school and, and, you know, a lot of her friends have walked you down to Bridgeport, or, I'm sorry, Burton and Franklin. But the core group of that group, those girls are still here, and that's what she wanted to do, so I was forced to support her. She came home and sat down on the couch crying and saying that she was wanting to finish her education online. I said, "No. You want her to stay? You want to graduate? You're going to graduate for the class of two thousand and fifteen." She said, "And will you please get involved and see if there's anything you can do to help?" That was the biggest reason. Then I started getting involved, I started going to meetings, I started going to finance meetings. I've got a very strong background in finance, I've written plans, goals, and objectives. I started becoming more active and learning and studying and reading. I emailed Mr. Lang a couple of times trying to get some information on policies management to, to read into it. Within the first, with the first email, I believe that he sent me, I let him know that it was actually working, it was drafted, and probably isn't necessarily a draft that everybody should be seeing because there was a lot of edits and revisions that were in there that probably shouldn't have been. I've been, I've been studying more stuff than you can imagine over the last three months to prepare for anything I can do to help the school become better. In fact, I apply my expertise in IT and finance and personal management. I'm willing to do that.
What personal and professional skills can you contribute to the Board of Education?
I think I can summarize that in a nutshell, and I have a very extensive background in finance and a very, very solid background in leadership. I've managed crews of one-hundred and fifty. I now have four full-time employees and ten part-time that, that work for me that, you know, I, I can create the plan and they can make a come-to-provision. I don't have to be that, that person that's right there at every step of the moment. But I've got a very solid, very solid background in success.
John, what do you think of the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
The most important skill for a student to have? That's a tough question because I think everybody can view important skills different. You and I have talked on education before. If a student wants the education they're going to get, whether, whether they're being taught or their surroundings are, are being difficult, surroundings to be taught in. I think my daughter has done very well with her learning disability, not, not disability, inability to focus on certain things. My son never had to crack a book, actually had to work hard for it one of those days. So, so to answer your question, I think the biggest thing that they can get out of it is the opportunity for them to know what's right. Have the opportunity to have the education to take them to the next level, or have, be presented the opportunity to get the education to take them to the next level that they want. I, I try to get both of my children involved in my business, and they're smarter than me, they want real education. They don't want to work hard for a living. I think that the foundation of success taught at a young age is, is probably the most important.
John, as a board member, you'd be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
It's called reality, something I've had to deal with in my profession since I came home from the Army in nineteen ninety. I've been in management, leadership since then, and it's, you cannot, you cannot always do what you think is best for your life. You've got to look at, at the full surroundings. I'll give you an instance, one of the hardest things I've ever had to do was to fire my best friend's son. It was a very, very difficult thing for me to do. I hired him, I brought him up, and as soon as he graduated from high school, he started working for me. He was doing some things that weren't ethical, weren't right, and I couldn't trust him in my clients' houses. I had to let him go. I had to do what I knew was right. So, accountability.
John, why should we choose you for the Board of Education?
I believe with my background in, again, in finance and leadership and management, my previous success and track record on budgeting and finance, not to mention the countless hours that I've spent over the last three months studying the MASV resource manuals. I've read all nine-hundred and ninety pages of the Bridgeport Spaulding Policy Manual, I've studied them. I know it pretty much inside and out. And also, I was a second high school kid, I don't think that plays part, but it means that there were well over a hundred citizens out there that thought it was...
After review and discussion of significant issues, the Board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how will you manage this situation?
Majority votes, majority vote. You have to, you don't always have to agree. You're going to agree to disagree. I don't expect anyone in you two, you group, agree on everything all the time. I wouldn't expect you to. I didn't agree with my partner in business for ten years, however. Hopefully, we were able to manage a successful team and run a tight ship.
John, do you have any questions for us?
I think I've asked everybody over the past three months everything that I've felt that I needed to ask. Sure, there's going to be a lot of questions over the, over the next coming months of what's going on and where we stand, but I don't think that was time for that. Do I have questions? Yes, pertaining to this.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne from anywhere? Teddy? I don't know, does everybody know? I didn't think to ask, does everybody know John either? I think he's talked to everyone about Teddy. Does everybody know Teddy Morris? Okay.
Teddy, would you give us a, are you ready? Okay.
Bless you.
Would you give us a brief description of yourself as it relates to the district?
Well, of course, Mark was out of school for, for ten years, and I followed along closely with, with his discussion, which you can discuss at home. And what was in the news. I met most of the people that were a part of the administration in the past years. Some followed pretty closely, the things that were going on in the district, the good things, as well as some of the things that probably could be improved on. I'm aware of most of the issues.
What are three issues that the Bridgeport Spaulding Community School District is currently facing?
I think probably the number one issue, in my opinion, is the fact that the test scores probably aren't sufficient for issues. And then, of course, we always have the financial problems that have plagued most school districts now. And the last thing I look around there and I always consider is how much parents are involved in your schools. And I might not have the latest information on that, but I think there could be more than that.
Thank you.
Teddy, at times, you may be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and policy or the law that you're required to uphold as a board member. How will you handle this?
I like that question because I've had to deal with that question quite a bit. And I've come to this point in my life, and this is the good part about being a woman, that I'm not always the right person, the person in the room that has the right. There may be several good answers in the room. And sometimes, when I think I'm so right, I have, am trying to get to be that person that can listen to some of other people's points of view. And sometimes, back off of my personal point of view, if I see what other people can also be correct, I try to go that way. If I think I am just very, very, very right and nobody else is seeing what I'm seeing, I really try to make my argument. I try to get my facts, and I, I just try to lay it out as clearly as possible. And then that's all you can do.
Teddy, how, how would you handle a situation involving your own child, a neighbor, another parent, or other situations that may arise that could possibly be a conflict of interest to you as a board member?
I don't see that I would handle it in any prejudicial type of way. If I, if I have personal knowledge of someone, a neighbor, or a child or neighbor that I was familiar with, of course, I, I would try to bring whatever information I had. I would do that for anybody, if, if somebody that I was more familiar with. But as far as, are you saying one prejudicial treatment for that person or...?
How would you handle, let's say, like, it's your neighbor. You've known him for fifteen, you've known him for fifteen years. And he does something that he might be expelled for, something at the school, and it comes before you, how would you handle that?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I would just have, I would handle it just based on facts.
So, there'd be no, it wouldn't make any difference?
It would make any difference to me on that.
But I don't personally, myself, my own children, I treat them harsher than anybody else.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't make any difference. I don't have any relatives in my school system.
Teddy, what relationship do you believe the Board of Education should have with the superintendent?
Well, I think it should be a cordial relationship. Anything is gained when you don't have the same vision. However, the school board, I believe, is in a position of being in charge of the administration to a certain degree. And they, that superintendent has answers to the school board. I think that's the relationship. And so, if the school board has to ask some questions, the administration and superintendent should provide you with answers.
Nice dance, too.
No, I usually have a choo-choo train on here, I don't know what happened. Sorry. Who's our attorney? An average month for a school board member could include above three scheduled meetings and perhaps five school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence required reading and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule?
That probably has been the most difficult thing I've had to consider in seeking this position. Because it is a great commitment, and I saw my husband did it, I mean, it's a lot. Maybe I don't think it's a small job, it isn't, and I know that firsthand, so I think a lot, a lot of thought. And I decided that if I, if you decide, I have some skills that can help you. If I do bring something to the table that you think will help you, then I'm willing to be on the school board, however you know. If not, fine.
I think you kind of answered the next part, but at times are very challenging for all of us right now. So, what made you decide to really become a part, or want to become a part of this decision-making process?
I never had wanted to be on the school board at the outset. Because I knew it was a lot and very demanding. Somebody brought it to my attention that I might have a useful part to play on the school board. And I do have a lot of experience in education. I have thought about a lot of the issues that we go on. I do have some ideas with this school district that I could share. And, you know, life would be more easy for me if I just sat at home and played with my rare baby and went on vacations. But I guess at some point, you have to be willing to be unselfish, I guess. If there's something to be offered, you know, if not fine, but if you find that you think I have something to offer, then I think it would be a sacrifice of the board's commitment to be on the school board if I can help.
What personal and professional skills can you contribute to the Board of Education?
I have broken out here that I am a fair person. I try to work in a collaborative manner. I am a former educator. I taught for thirty-five years prior to my retirement. I taught for thirty-five years prior to my retirement. I was a classroom teacher, a teacher for inclusion, and a resourceful teacher at the high school level for special education students. During those years, I served on various building committees, volunteer. I volunteered for school events and after-school programs for many years. And during the latter years of my tenure at Arthel High School, I did serve for a while on their school improvement. And I chaired this student improvement. And that was a great learning experience on many levels. I consider myself a team player. I understand that a lot of people have a lot of good ideas. But at the end of the day, I'm down here also. There is no magic wand to, that would get a student from point A to point B. But education has to be relevant and personal. I've learned that over the years. That kids want to believe that we care. And at the end of the day, when we're in a room and we're having all of our discussions, that decision has to be what is best for that student or what is best for the students. And that's, that's the end of the discussion.
Thank you.
Teddy, what do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
Well, of course, you know, we want all of our students to be prepared to find a job, to be employed. And that's very important. It's highly important. I like to see students graduate with a feeling of citizenship, feeling their sense of responsibility in a community. And just some character things to, which I think a lot of schools now are including with their graduation requirements. If kids do volunteer work or community service along with their minors. I think all of those things are important. But at the end of the day, I guess we want to graduate students tied up academic skills or job skills so that they can find employment.
Teddy, as a board member, you'd be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students and the district. What does that mean to you?
Well, for me, that is the issue of what is best for the students. What's best for kids is part of what we hear. And I have, normally I know when I was working a lot of times when adults get in the room and it starts to be teacher issues or administration or the adults. I don't have too much patience to that because we're here for students. And I always try to draw the conversation back to that, what is best for the students. And that's just my feeling on it.
Teddy, why should we choose you as a board member?
I don't know, to be honest. If you, if you see something somewhere, I tried to give you a brief summary of my experience and skills. And if you see something that could help you, then, you know, by all means, I think that would be a good choice. But if you see something that another person has that you think would be as helpful or more helpful, then I believe you should choose them. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but I'm willing to do what I can with what I have.
After review and discussion on significant issues, the board operates by majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how will you manage that situation?
I probably will stop out of the room. If it's a big issue and I really think that everybody has just missed the whole vote, I might hesitate and try to change some of this. But if it's something that I know, and if I've been in the discussion, I'm going to assume that I brought all the facts that I have to the table and all the information already that I could provide to you. And if people still make another decision, I do shake my head a lot, but I'm, what can you do? When you brought all the facts to the table and made it as clear as you can make it, and then people still make another choice, it is a sad position to be in. I've been in that position before. I don't like it, especially when the facts are really pointed to another clear choice. But I, what can you do except, I'm not going to be angry about it. I don't think I'm an angry person.
Teddy, do you have any questions for us?
I get always wondered, when you're in this position as a school board, it's a fairly dangerous job. People don't appreciate the time I put into it. And I saw that person through my phone. And I had school boards in Saginaw when I was teaching in Saginaw. I did a lot of school work in Saginaw. It's not easy job. And I wonder why any of us do it other than for the fact that we care about children. And when we're all in the room together, I have to just always wonder, why can't we get along? I just don't get that. And so much time is wasted needlessly. And I would like to, you know, be that kind of person that doesn't get in that circumstance and try to help all of us, you know, have a clear vision to our purpose. Because we're all making a great sacrifice. Everybody that's on this school board, we're not getting paid. It's different. I remember my husband once said, he was under some meanness. He thought I was the only one at the table not getting paid. We are, he laughed, but you know, it was true. You're negotiating contracts and everybody there, the lawyers, the administrator, everybody there is getting a paycheck except you. So what's your motivation to be there? Because you care about children and making sure they get the best that they can get. So why waste your time on, you're taking time from your families to come here, to leave, to waste time, not being productive? And I don't know if it's a question, but it's just a comment here. I think that's a big waste of time. That every time you leave, it should be a consensus and everybody should be trying their hardest to get to their, to reach their goal and to always keep an eye on the progress and stay focused. And that's, that's my mentality about anything that I do. I try to stay focused and I try to keep my eye on the progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to appoint. Before we just, you called out the name and they said who they were voting for. Is that the way we're going to do it? Huh?
I don't know a pass per this as much.
What she will do is she will call out your name on roll call and you will say which person you're voting for. Okay? Mr. Barnes?
Teddy Morris.
Mr. Lang?
Mrs. Morris, but I would also like to say thank you, John. We have two outstanding candidates here. It's a really tough decision to make, so thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Teddy Morris.
Mr. Nelson?
John Rudge.
Mr. Allen?
Teddy Morris.
And Mrs. Sager. Teddy? I need a motion to approve appointing Teddy Morris to the Board of Education?
So move.
Teddy, support. Moved by Dempsey, supported by Larry. Roll call, please. Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sager.
Yes.
Personnel report?
Good evening, board members. We have a brief report here that says amended because two additional names were added just today. And I want to tell you that none of these are new positions. These are positions, these are, we're filling vacancies through either resignations or retirements. And this is the time of the year when we often have retirees. Down on the bottom of the list, we have four teachers that either retired or resigned. And at the top of the list, we have Shalonda Ellison, fifth grade, the fifth grade. Alfonso Espinoza, who's going to food service. Ms. Harris and Ms. Labrock, and I'm probably slathering these names, to-be bus drivers. Sarah Namor, third grade teacher. Owens, fifth grade teacher. Sarah Rabard, middle school elective. And Gabe Rodriguez, high school behavior coordinator. And Gabe, I know, is one of our own, graduated from Bridgeport High School.
Also, any other resignations?
And the resignations, Michelle Frehler, Alyssa Jackson, Starluz, who is retiring, and Maurice Presley. Starluz's retirement is not effective until February twentieth, but she put her paperwork in, which means that that opens up the way for us to start looking for replacement for her.
I need a motion to approve the personnel report?
I have a question.
Let's have the motion first and then we'll have discussion. Moved by Bob.
Support.
Supported by Pat. Now discussion?
The high school behavior coordinator, is that out of title funds?
Yeah, well, thirty-one eight, yes. And it's replacing, we had Kristen Patterson. She resigned. It was on your report for the last one. She resigned. And we wanted to get that position filled as quickly as possible because, you know, we've had BEA members talking about behavior issues in the high school. We wanted to get that taken care of, get that filled as soon as possible. And just so you know, Gabe Rodriguez is coming to us from the Saginaw Learn to Earn Academy, where he is the present disciplinary recruitment coordinator and head of security. And so he comes with probably more experience in this area of behavior coordination, behavior support than a previous staff member in that position.
So since it's just a replacement, it doesn't impact the budget? Because I'm just concerned that the police officer that we just brought up was out of title funds also.
Yes, yes.
And we're paying him out of that fund?
Yes, yes. We're good.
And I got to tell you, he's doing a great job already. I was here from, interviewed from seven-thirty this morning till three-thirty this afternoon. He was working his tail off the whole time I was there. Okay, roll call. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Ball? And Mrs. Sager. Yes. At the Committee to Study District Technology, I need a motion and support, and then I'll discuss what I've put together. Motion by Larry, supported by Jay. Roll call, please. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sager. Yes. The reason I've put this on the agenda and asked for approval is I've been getting numerous calls and emails. The latest one was from one of our former students from Arizona who tried to get on the alumni page of the high school website to change his email address. Couldn't get on there to change it. I've had other people call about the athletics aren't up to date. And last spring, we hired this company to come in and do this new website. It was supposed to be all updated and ready to go before school started. I can't even get into it. And when I talked to the technician, he says, well, he says, it's got to be your computer. But yet I can get into the schools that use the same company as we do, and I don't have that same problem. So I would like to appoint, with the board's permission, the following people. Mike Andre, Chuck Spurling, would you ever serve on that committee?
I'd rather not, but...
Well, you're the electrician and you know we're all...
All right, I will.
Chad Bukowski is the new teacher at Atkins, and he's got a lot of technology background. Brian McCarthy, our principal here at the high school, has got a lot of technology background. And I know that Pat Nelson has got a lot of technology background, and I know he's helped save the township a lot of money. So I would like to appoint him as chair of that committee. Is there any discussion?
Make that motion.
The motion was made. I just, I need, is there any discussion from the board before we vote on it?
You voted for it, right?
Huh? No, we made the motion. We haven't voted. We made the motion and then I discussed why I wanted to do it. Here is no discussion. Roll call.
I have, just to add to that, is Bob graciously offered to also lend his support with his technology background as well. So I'd like to have his name on that list where he participates in the fold. Though we're not going to be able to handle it, but I'd like his name to be on that list from a board perspective. If he's okay with that, so.
Sure.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sager.
Yes.
Okay, board and superintendent reports. Bob? No comments, rather. I've been here all day.
I would like to extend my thanks to Teddy for coming out this evening. Appreciate your answers from both candidates. Honestly, it was a very difficult choice. Thank you for telling us. Hope you give us another shot.
I would like to say I'm old. I make you older here in a moment.
Pat?
Thank you both. Teddy, welcome. Appreciate you both, your willingness to speak.
Jay?
Yeah, this website and the technology and, and, you know, that's been an issue since I've been on the board. I've heard from John numerous times about the website. We're paying an awful lot of money to Zimco presently, who was responsible for the technology. And, you know, I think it's great that, that's one of the issues that people have had the last few months when they've been coming to the podium, is, is the website and, and the technology. And hopefully, with Pat chairing that committee, we can finally put that to bed. That's all.
I'd like to first thank Teddy for becoming one of us. And I'd like to thank John for his interest and supplying some very positive information about what he would contribute to us. One of the things that you said was parental support, and since you are one of those parents, I'm very interested in hearing some of your ideas on how we may involve more parents. Whenever things are going well, we don't see parents at all. Well, that there be an iota of a problem, and we have to move the meeting to another room to accommodate the parents. I would like to see that reversed, and I think you can help us with that. So that being said, thank you both.
Larry?
I echo on that because that has been something that has dwindled over the years. There's always a core group that are in the schools, but we do need to reach out because more and more, they're looking for the schools to raise these children, and we need to get the parents involved because we can't simply do it by ourselves. With technology, I feel very confident in the short order. We have a good handle on that with Pat taking the reins of that and getting buy-in from everybody else that's on board. Teddy, it was a pleasure and a lot of respect working with your husband, and I hope to have that too also. And I have very much confidence that I will form your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy and John. And I'd also like to state that our former art teacher and some of our former students were competing in the Snow Fest in two different areas, and our teams took first in both places, both the national, and one was the national. So it, it was neat to see that those guys are, were doing that and then we ended up getting first. They've been on TV and everything else, so it's good for us. Oh, by the way, I'm going to keep the same committees that I had last year. Teddy, I will be putting you on the curriculum committee because that was the one that Travis was on previously. So you will serve on the curriculum committee. Have you got any comments?
Um, just a couple. I too would like to ditto the comments from the board members. Thank Mr. Ryan for his interest, your interest in the board. And as the acting superintendent, understanding that we, yes, we do have some challenges in terms of parent involvement, I would love to sit down and talk with you, chat with you about your ideas and suggestions on what we can do to increase parental involvement in the district. Years ago, that, when I taught in the district, we, we had lots of parents, not just here at the high school, but district-wide, involved in all kinds of ways. And I, I think it's not just a Bridgeport problem. It is probably a problem across the country. For whatever reason, parents can't or won't volunteer their time and energies to help support what we're doing here in our schools. And I'd love to hear your ideas on what we can do to increase that because even though times have changed, our students still need parental support, both here and at home. Congratulations, Teddy. I'm looking forward to working with you on the board, and I'm sure your husband would be very proud of, of this new step that you're taking. I just want to report that although not perfect, we're, we just began our second semester, and I think we have at least one other administrator here. They will say that generally, we had a pretty smooth start to second semester across the district. And now we move forward to getting our seniors ready for graduation because before we know it, and Mr. Ryan, do you have a senior? Yes, and I met her just a little bit ago. I'm sure that's very heavy on their minds. Graduation, graduation, graduation. And so we'll be working, of course, getting our students ready for the next step. Those high schools ready for the next step in their life journey. And I think that's all I have to say. I probably could say more, but I won't for now. Thank you.
Okay, have no further comments. The meeting stands adjourned.